Hello and welcome to the Monday, April 24th, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. In accordance with the state's Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on April 20th, 2023, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. The advertised budget was provided on April 13, 2023, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier-News. Can we please take a roll, Mr. Ecker?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mr. Mariney?
Here. We have a quorum. Would they take a motion to move it to executive session, whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and the State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are a legal matter, a student matter, and personnel matters. Matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion in a second? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll return approximately 7:30. Thank you. Hello and welcome back to the Monday, April 24th, 2023 Hillsborough Township Board of Education Meeting. We are back from executive session. And with that, Mr. Ecker, if we could take a roll?
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Kidd?
Here.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Ms. Stats?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
And Mr. Mariney?
Here. We have a quorum. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I would like to acknowledge the correspondents as listed.
And we will move to item six, the school budget public hearing. Mr. Ecker, did you want to start talking about the budget while I'm trying to get it up there?
Sure. This is where we need a singing performance every week in case we need a long pause. Don't want that for me. Unfortunately, you can't see the slides at the moment, but I will get into the 2324 final budget presentation. And we're going to start with a review of the budget goals for 202324. As stated in the tentative budget presentation from March 13th, the budget goals for 2324 were pretty simple, given the anticipated state aid cuts. All of the goals are focused on maintaining and protecting programs that are in place for the 2022, 2023 school year, and protecting the staffing levels for those programs, as well as the proper maintenance of our facilities. The budget maintains all of that while providing a thorough and efficient education as required by the state of New Jersey. A quick overview of the proposed final 232024 budget. Our general fund of $135,827,576 is increasing by just over 2.5 million from the 2022, 2023 budget, despite our state aid reduction of $913,000. The reason for this is a 2% tax levy increase and the fact that we have budgeted to withdraw $1 million from our capital reserve account to support the projects that are included in the budget. The grants and entitlement portions of the budget comprise the federal, state, and local grants and donations, and it is budgeted at $1,863,121, which is a decrease of $150,251. With this area of the budget, the state recommends that we budget below the current year, since you do not learn our federal grant allocations until May or June. Once we receive those allocations, the grant entitlement budget will be increased throughout the year to the allocations. The final portion of the budget is our debt service, which is the principal and interest payment for the bonds that were issued for the 2019 referendum. The 202324 payment is scheduled to be $2,178,650. And this makes the total budget that the board is voting on tonight to be $139,869,347. Now, I'd just like to touch a little bit on the tax rate information. As for the 2023 tax rate for both Hillsborough and Millstone, it is lower than the 2022 tax rate for both townships. This is attributed to the increase in ratables in both towns, and the ratable increase can be attributed to both reassessments, as well as new commercial and residential properties coming online. For Hillsborough residents, the 2023 tax rate is decreasing by approximately seven cents per $100 of assessed value, while for Millstone residents, the 2023 tax rate is decreasing by approximately 17 cents per $100 of assessed value. And at this point, Mr. Volpe, the next one is yours.
I'm going to have to delay just momentarily because I cannot get anything to come up at the moment. Unfortunately, I can't walk and chew gum at the same time, so I'm trying to connect my computer. My goodness. 172. budget without having a budget to present to people, but I will do the best I can under the circumstances that I have. My apologies, that's why I make sure I'll set that up in advance next time. Unfortunately, it seems to always work. So, Mr. Ecker, do you want to just direct him to the correct where we leave off?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to remind everybody that when it comes to the budget, we did have some certain state aid allocation changes within the county. And behind me on the board is what has happened in this county. You have looked at this and seen that millions of dollars have gone to other public school districts in Somerset County, New Jersey, and we still have a $900,000 deficit. Now, some of you may be thinking to yourselves right now, hey, we heard that some of that was coming back. As of right now, this moment, we do not have that, two-thirds of that being restored. And keep in mind, even we have two-thirds of a cut being restored, that still means we are being cut. And Mr. Ecker momentarily is going to explain how that is going to roll over into our next year's budget, but the budget that we are presenting right now still has that $900,000 deficit. It will be shorter, but there will still be a deficit. And I do want to say that if this continues, I'm hoping that our state legislators are able to do something about S2 and make sure that we have a fair funding formula moving forward, that what I was able to promise and deliver this year about keeping programs and staff, I can't promise that if the state of New Jersey doesn't intervene and do something in future years. It is something that needs to be seriously addressed, and I just want to highlight that, that when you look at the board behind me, that looks unfair to Hillsborough. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that we're still dealing with that cut. It's still a $900,000 cut in the budget we are presenting tonight, but we will talk about what we are going to be doing when two-thirds of the cut is being restored.
As Mr. Volpe shared, the state aid for the 2324 school year is still decreasing by $913,106. Since we passed our tentative budget on March 13th, there has been movement within the state. There was a bill passed in both the Senate and Assembly and signed by Governor Murphy that provides supplemental stabilization aid, but it's in the current FY23 budget in the amount of $602,650. And as Mr. Volpe stated, that's two-thirds of what our 2324 state aid cut is. These funds will be received in the 2223 school year and is a one-time funding that is not expected to be included in our state aid when we build the 2425 school budget this time next year. As a result, we plan to use it on one-time, non-recurring items such as replacing the high school woodchop dust collection system, purchasing two buses instead of leasing to reduce future lease payments, and renting buses while we're waiting for those new purchase buses to arrive. We are required to apply for these funds, and as you will see, if you look through the board agenda tonight, there is a resolution in the operations section of tonight's agenda for the board to approve us to apply for that. Once that happens, we will make that application tomorrow, and we expect that that money will be deposited into our bank in the coming weeks. So at this time, that's all the information that we have on that restored aid, and I'll turn it back over to Mr. Volpe to walk you through the separate proposals that were introduced as part of the tentative budget in March.
And I want to reiterate something, or not reiterate, I'm going to state something that's going to be stated later in my budget presentation. I'm sorry, Mr. Ecker worked really hard on those first few slides, and you didn't get to see them, but I'm going to be sharing those on our website. And also, if you get the Hillsborough happenings every week between now and next November, you're going to get a link with a copy to this budget presentation. So if you missed out on those slides and you really want to see how hard Mr. Ecker worked on them, you will get them constantly and consistently between now and next November. So the separate proposals. This is a question that I had asked before about who's in charge of school safety and security, and this Board of Education is really a great group of people to work with. They have the virgin opinions, but every one of the nine members elected sitting here, they all believe that they are doing what is in the best interest of children. Sometimes that comes to a disagreement. People have disagreements of opinion, but we spent a lot of time talking about this, and the Board of Education will be voting on this separate proposal to bring forth to the taxpayers in November, a little bit later in the meeting today. And whether that's a 9-0 vote, a 7-2 vote, a 5-4 vote, I hope it's a 9-0 vote, this board speaks in one voice in the end, and will be putting forth such a question to the taxpayers in November if voted on. So what does that look like? It would be creating a security department. And behind me are the numbers from the original tentative budget. It's all still there. If you paid attention, nothing has changed. We will be creating a security department. I want to be very clear right now that this is an unarmed security department. We are not talking about class three officers or anybody carrying any weapons. We are getting security personnel, hopefully with either law enforcement or safety and security background who have worked in this area before. We are talking about one security supervisor and then one person per each building. So each and every student, each and every staff member, each and every building will have someone there whose only job is safety and security in the building, not also doing observations, not also cooking meals, not also teaching kids, just keeping eyes on school safety and security. Again, this would be a question put forth to the taxpayers of Hillsborough and Millstone this November. The board, after a lot of debate too and discussion and divergent opinions, has also coalesced around the fact that we need to start building Borough back. In 2018, 2019, since that time, we lost about 50 certificated staff members, mostly teachers, but also things like counselors, child study team members, all along those lines. And over time, we are hoping that through a variety of means, both with partnering with the community, as well as advocating with the state to find funding and build Borough back to just honestly where we used to be. And, Mr. Mariney, if you advance forward. So we're talking about 20 certificated staff members coming back. We don't have the details for you of where all those positions are going to go at this time. We will when the summer's over, maybe late September. That'll give everybody plenty of time in which to decide if this is something that they want to support. And where your children go to school, or where are these certificated staff members going, we will have that detailed for you. Keep in mind, this is something that you'll be voting on in November, so if we are lucky enough to have these towns say yes that we want to build Borough back, we will start the hiring process, and more than likely, it would be something that would come halfway through the year next year, and that will be detailed for you prior to going into the polls and hopefully voting to move this forward. I'm going to have to turn around and look over here for a little bit. So one of the things I talked about in my budget update on March 27th was about transparency, and this time I even highlighted a couple of words too, because I have been getting some, what I consider from a new superintendent's point of view, some flattering press and some nice headlines about the work that I'm doing here and about the magic going on with the budget, if you want to call it magic. But there's important details that I want to make sure that everybody clearly understands. We have some facts listed right there. I want to make it clear that staff members are not being cut to balance the budget. And when I say staff members too, Ms. Stats often brings up the point, what about positions? Like if the staff members already retired? No, every position and staff members sitting in those positions are coming back. We did a lot of hard work to make sure that we didn't have to say goodbye to any more of our staff members, and they are all coming back, unless they're leaving for some reason. But the position will be there. Tax rates are going down, and I know a question was asked at the days at the last meeting, like how can tax rates be going down? I can only raise the tax levy 2%, and if you have seen, there's a lot more building and people and ratables moving into town. It's like that example I gave several months ago about taking Mr. Ecker out to dinner, but I can only collect $200. And if multiple people come out to dinner, then more people pay less money. So that is how the tax rate in Hillsborough and Millstone is going down. There are more people here to chip into that ultimate only 2% that taxes can be raised on the levy. And also a fact, when you compare apples to apples, if the assessed value of your home is the same in this upcoming year that it was this past year, and the proposals and the budget passes, your taxes will go down, again, because more people are coming into town paying that burden. That is a fact. The question is, what does this mean to you? And this is what I want to point out, that doesn't necessarily get in the headlines all the time, that fourth one. Will your taxes go up? Will they go down? Or will they stay the same? This is going to require a little bit of work on community members' ends, because what you're going to have to do is you're going to have to look at your assessed value from this past year and the assessed value in your house for the next year. If the assessed value of your house goes down, and believe me, sometimes it does, not often, your taxes are going down. If your assessed value stays the same, your taxes are going down. If your assessed value goes up, it depends on how much it goes up, and it depends which proposals are going to be supported. So what Mr. Ecker and I are going to do is by the end of this summer, we're going to give people some resources or a step-by-step process to look at your assessed value from the past couple of years, to look at the budget, and to look at the separate proposals, and to determine, are your taxes, are they staying the same? Are they going down? Are they going up? And how much are they going up? This is as transparent as we can possibly be. I want to make sure that every resident of Millstone and Hillsborough makes an informed and educated decision. And again, we have some time. If we get this to you by the end of the summer, it gives you two months before you go into a poll and push a button one way or the other. And, Mr. Mariney, can you go to the next one? And I'll kick it back over to Mr. Ecker.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. I think it's an exciting opportunity for our voters to decide on whether or not these proposals move forward. The next steps of our budget process is for the board to approve a final 20232024 budget during tonight's meeting, and for us to then submit that budget to the Executive County Superintendent, along with all the supporting documents that we need to submit. We will then also post the user-friendly budget on our website in the next 48 hours. The separate proposals will go to a vote on the general election on November 7th, and more information, as Mr. Volpe stated, will be provided throughout the course of the summer. With that, we will continue to work with our legislators to advocate for the change in the funding formula or additional funding to help our district, and that concludes the presentation on the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Ecker. And I again want to say that I truly believe this, being a Hillsborough resident myself, as you are all who are sitting here, that this is a partnership with you. This is not, hey, do this just because I'm saying it's a good thing to do. When I talk about transparency, I want you to know where are these positions going before you go into a booth to potentially vote on them and the separate proposals. I want to give you the resources to figure out what is the tax impact to you, but this is a good deal for the students of Hillsborough, for the staff members of Hillsborough, and honestly, for the town of Hillsborough. When our schools are better, our town is better, and I'm really excited to see what we're going to be doing here over the next several budget cycles. And like Mr. Ecker said, thank you. Can you, what's next on the agenda there, Jerry? Because I usually have it electronically.
We'll now move on to six dot two, public comment on the 20232024 school budget. Public hearing on the 20232024 budget provides the opportunity for the public to comment on the proposed budget. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to state your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comment, and remember, this is just on the budget.
Good evening, Stefania Lockwood, Millstone River Road. I just wanted to lend some support to Mr. Volpe's presentation regarding the schools in Somerset County. The number that really jumped out at me every time that this has been presented has been North Plainfield's $12 million. So I went and I took a look to see what the difference is. North Plainfield has 3,500 students, of which 62.6% are economically disadvantaged, and does so with a total budget around $93 million at an 11 to 1 student ratio. So to put that in context of Hillsborough and what we are able to do, our total budget is about $40 million more, so not even half again as much, but we have more than double the number of students. We have 7,300 students in Hillsborough, of which 6.8% are economically disadvantaged. So there is an order of magnitude difference there, which makes sense, there would be an order of magnitude difference in the aid. However, that order of magnitude doesn't quite line up when you think about the student teacher ratio, which is 12 to 1, basically the same. So somehow, we are doing just slightly less with only slightly more money than one of the districts who is receiving that large sum of aid. Now, I think everybody will agree that North Plainfield and Hillsborough are not the same types of communities, and there's a good reason that North Plainfield is getting the aid that they're getting. But I just wanted to put that in the context. We are doing a lot in Hillsborough with limitations that have been placed on us by the state. All of this information that I cited, you can look up in the New Jersey School Report Cards, readily available, easy to search by school district, as are every single school district's school budget. So I encourage anyone who's on the fence about supporting either of the proposals that hopefully the board members will approve tonight for the November election, to use these resources and really understand. As I stated earlier, I encourage all of the board members and all of the community to vote in favor of both proposals. Yes, even me, the security proposal. And I have strong opinions and strong feelings about why I think that would be a really, really good thing for our district. So I encourage you all to please vote in favor of our students tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else that would like to make any comment on the budget?
Hi, my name is Veronica Debbie. I'm an 11th grader, and we're representing the FBLA team from Hillsborough High School. We're here to discuss the stipend and what we need for moving forward on nationals. So recently, we competed at national or at state level for our team, and we made it past to nationals. 20 of our members have made it past, and to move on to nationals, we have to have a stipend for our advisor to attend a five-day, five-night trip to Atlanta, Georgia, and without a stipend, our advisors wouldn't be able to attend. And this has been a problem for our club previously, and our club has also been established previously, like over the past few years, and the club has been unsuccessful due to the lack of stipends. So we're just wondering if you guys could help us, support us with a stipend?
Yeah, so in our last conference, in our regional leadership conference, we had over 90% of our students placed top in the region in their events. And then in around March 6th through March 8th, we went to the state leadership conference in Atlantic City, and our team performed quite excellently. It really reflected their hard work. 28 of our members placed as state finalists, and 20 members will be moving on to nationals. And this is an accomplishment that many chapters, even the ones who have been here for a very long time, struggle to reach.
So we are a new team that started with a $0 balance, and I have almost exclusively been funded by our own team members, and that is a prime reason why we do need funding, even though we are a new club. At this moment, cost per student will be minimum $1,600 for traveling, because we are going to another state. And we understand and appreciate that FBLA is different from many other clubs at our high school, especially in regard to student interest. And we understand that this is a huge time commitment, but we would greatly appreciate if you guys could consider this.
Thank you for your comment. So that would be for this year's expense, not for the budget coming up for next year, but thank you for the comments. Any others? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment. I'll open it up to the board if they want to provide any comment before we move on to a motion to vote. Stats?
First of all, thank you for, Mr. Volpe and Mr. Ecker, for your presentation and how thorough you are with explaining, you know, some pretty complicated issues, especially the tax issue and funding from the state, or lack thereof. But I'm very happy that we have the opportunity for the public to vote on these proposals, the extra proposals in November, especially with the staffing one. We lost so many people in 2019, so many positions. And thank you for clarifying that as well. And especially when people were asked for their input on the budget, the top priority was class sizes. So I'm confident and hopeful that a big chunk, a big majority of those 20 positions will be for teachers to hopefully reduce class sizes.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Ms. Nurse?
Yes, I know that when we were talking about the separate proposals for staff members, that there was going to be some clarification about size and whatnot, and I was wondering if you would like to do that, if we'd like somebody else to do that.
Sure, now I can address that, and I think, Ms. Nurse, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, as these certificated staff positions would be voted on in November, most likely hired in January, some of them we'll have to get creative with, and some of them for semester classes will immediately impact class size. There has been some conversation about more positions coming for elementary to lower class sizes. What we will not do is we will not hire people in January and then break up an elementary school class and say, hi, I know you know and you love your teacher who you've been with since September through December, but we're going to reduce your class size by four kids, so here you have this new teacher. So there may be supplemental resources that we use in our elementary schools, but those positions will become a permanent part of our school district moving forward. And then the following full school year, next year, we could look at reducing those class sizes. So class sizes reductions initially would be for semester classes, and we will find ways to support our elementary students. But as far as longer term, this could also help out in the But as far as longer term, this could also help out in the following year in reducing class sizes as well. I think that's what we wanted to speak to.
Yes, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Okay. All right, I'll now move on to 6.3, motion to approve.
Okay, I would ask for the board's consideration under the 22, sorry, 23-24 school budget public hearing for consideration to approve the 23-24 school budget. In 6.3, also in 6.4. 6.4, wow, I'm having a day. 6.4 to approve the 23-24 separate budget proposals. 6.5, approve the resolution for travel reimbursement expenses and maximum travel for the 23-24 school year. And 6.6, motion to approve professional services maximum expenditures for the 23-24 school year. 6.7, motion to approve capital reserve withdrawal. 6.8, motion to approve maintenance reserve withdrawal for the 23-24 school budget. And 6.9, motion to approve corrective action plan for semi. So these are all of the motions under the 23-24 school budget.
All right, can I get a motion in a second? So moved. Any additional discussion by the board before we move to vote? All right, seeing none, Mr. Eckert will move to roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marine?
Yes, motion passes.
Before we move on to the board president's report, I really want to thank the elected members of the Board of Education who just unanimously passed everything that we have been talking about over the past several months. And again, these are intelligent, passionate people who disagree. But when, they do, believe it or not. But when it came down to putting forth what's ready for the next step as we build Borough back, they came together as one and spoke as one, and I just appreciate everybody's efforts in doing that. And now, Mr. President, you can move on to your report.
Sure. So 7.1, board president's report, very, very short, and this is just a note for the community. Obviously, the next election, as we've been talking about, the separate proposals is coming up. Also, that will be three members of the Board of Education. Spots will be open to the public. So again, for any folks interested, I believe it's end of June that you're required to, sorry, end of July, thank you, thank you. End of July to file your petition to run for the board or any other position within the town. I believe there's obviously town council and other things that are open to folks. All right, so now we'll move on to the mental health awareness proclamation. Proclamation, May 2023, Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas National Mental Health Awareness Month was established in 1949 to raise awareness about the importance of mental wellness and to stop the stigma associated with mental health, May is now also declared stigma-free month by many New Jersey communities and municipalities, including Somerset County and Hillsborough Township. And whereas mental illness can affect anyone and can develop at any time, it affects, its effects spread well beyond the individual to family, friends, and coworkers. And whereas in the United States, one in five adults will experience a mental illness each year, and 5.6% of U.S. adults experienced serious mental illness in 2020. And whereas 17% of youth experience a mental health disorder each year, and 30% of all lifetime mental illnesses begin by age 14. And whereas feelings of worry, stress, or fear are normal during a crisis, the CDC recommends taking a break from the news, taking care of your body with meals, exercise and deep breathing, taking time to relax and engage in enjoyable activities and connecting with loved ones. Free and confidential resources are available to assist in connecting with a skilled, trained counselor. And whereas Hillsborough Township and the Hillsborough School District have been designated as stigma-free, the Stigma-Free Initiative helps raise awareness surrounding mental health and strives to create an environment where individuals feel free to seek support to enhance their mental health without fear of being stigmatized. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that we, the Hillsborough Board of Education, do hereby declare May as National Mental Health Awareness Month. Be it further proclaimed that we, the Hillsborough Board of Education, encourage all Hillsborough residents to recognize National Mental Health Awareness Month for implementing self-care strategies, asking for help if you need it, and by celebrating our behavioral health heroes on the front lines.
Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, superintendent's report?
Great. Wow, I first want to say thanks to those of you who stayed tuned, as I was a little flustered with technological capabilities to start. And I do have some friends, and sometimes my wife tunes into these as well. And I just want to say to my wife Stacy, now you know why I hand you the remote when I'm trying to get Netflix on, because some days technology just doesn't like me, and I'll make sure that we don't have those mistakes in the future. As far as to my real superintendent's report, I received two items of great news from Christopher Island, our supervisor of fine arts. After having their talent recognized as a music festival, they attended. 18 singers of the HHS Mixed Corral were invited to perform with an international collection of singers at the newly renovated David Geffen Hall at Lincoln Center. After a full weekend of rehearsals, our students, accompanied by their director, Mrs. Ashley Matthews, sang works composed and conducted by the world-renowned musician Eric Whitaker on April 17, 2023. Congratulations on this wonderful experience. Also, our music department has been recognized for the third consecutive year as a 2023 Best Communities for Music Education. I don't want this to become stale because we've won it three years in a row. It's actually very prestigious because this award recognized outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Designations are made to school districts that demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. To give you an idea of how exceptional our music program is, only 8% of New Jersey districts and only 6% of school districts nationally receive this recognition this year. So I know we got it three years in a row, so you think it's like a participation trophy? It's not. This is for the elite of the elite. Thank you to our teachers for providing a fantastic music education to our students and for all of the support from our community. And finally, I would just like to take a personal note to welcome Aaron Rodgers to the New York Jets. And if he wants a free pass to football games in the fall to show up at Hillsborough, I'd be more than happy to invite him. And that concludes my superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe. All right, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes. 9-1 through 9-5, motion to approve executive session minutes 32723. Motion to approve public meeting minutes 32723. 9-3, motion to approve public meeting minutes 41723. 9-4, motion to approve executive session minutes 41823. And 9-5, motion to approve public meeting minutes 41823. Can I get a motion in a second?
So move.
All right, any comments from board members?
I will probably need to abstain on 9.3.
I'm also abstaining from 9.3.
Okay. 4.3. All right, seeing no other comments, we will move to roll.
Actually, just do all in favor for those.
I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, all in favor.
And we've noted the.
We've noted the extensions. All right, we'll move on to comments from the board and public. 10.1, public input on the action agenda. We very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There'll be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be over for public comment. Members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment on any items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. That's by law 0167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. If this is what the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Department of Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein. Do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Just please state the action agenda item that you are speaking to before you comment.
Hello, we are HHS FRC Team 75, the Robo Raiders. As our season comes to an end, we'd like to update you on our tremendously successful season. We participated in several competitions throughout the season, including the Mount Olive and Montgomery District Events. At Mount Olive, our robot made it to the quarterfinals, ultimately ending in fourth place. We also won the Engineering Inspiration Award for the second year in a row, recognizing the inspirational efforts within the STEM community. At the Montgomery event, the team performed exceptionally well and advanced to the playoffs, making it to the semifinals and ending in third place, a step up from Mount Olive. We couldn't be more proud of our drive team, pit crew, and strategy department for getting us that far. We also were honored to receive the First Impact Award, the most prestigious award in all of First. It was, it was the first time we have won this award in four years, and we'd like to congratulate the First Impact presenters, business departments, and pit ambassadors for representing our impressive program so well. This award is a testament to the team's commitment to making a positive impact in its community and spreading STEM opportunities.
Team 75 also competed at the district championship for the first mid-Atlantic region at Lehigh University. We came into the competition ranked 20 out of 60 teams and left in 36th place, an impressive feat considering the teams we were up against. We were also given the opportunity to compete for both the Engineering Inspiration Award and the First Impact Award. Though we didn't qualify for the world championship, this season has been one of our most successful seasons, and we're proud of our team for putting everything they had into our program. Outside of our competition season, we've had successes within our initiatives. We recently had our April STEM Library Event at the high school, which was led by our Rater Pollinaires Initiative. Students were able to create their very own pollinators after learning about pollinization and its importance in the environment. Next week, our Wise Initiative, our Women in Science and Engineering, is leading a STEM event for young Girl Scouts in collaboration with Central High School Team 3637, the Daleks. We'd like to thank you, as one of our supporters this season, for enabling us to provide STEM and leadership opportunities to our team members. It's been an amazingly successful season, and we couldn't have done it without you. Thank you for your time and have a good evening.
Thank you for your comments. All right, seeing no other comments on the action agenda, we will move to the action agenda. Yeah, we're closed public comment at this point.
I'd ask for the board's consideration in the area of education to approve the following motions. Professional travel-related expenses to affirm the harassment, intimidation, and bullying determinations. Approval of curriculum writing, approving an overnight trip, field trip destination, and that's it.
Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Any discussion on the action agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marine?
Yes, motion passes.
In the area of human resources, I would ask the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Retirements and resignations, rescinding of an appointment, rescinding of contracts, approving revised seventh-period coverage, approving a revised coaching contract, approving contract changes, approving transfers and changes in assignments for 23-24, approving revised leaves of absence, approving mentors, approving student-teacher, approving appointments for 22-23, we are aggressively hiring, approving appointments for 22-23, sorry, 23-24, apologies. Sorry, it's in one of those technical things, yeah. Approving six- and seven-period coverage. And extra coverage, and that is it.
All right, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion by the board? All right, seeing, seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Ms. Trahill?
Yes.
And Mr. Marine?
Yes, motion passes.
Okay, in the area of operations, and hopefully without technical glitches this time, motion, I'd like just for the board's consideration to approve the following motions. Our monthly bills, approving monthly financials, line item transfers, approval of our financial status, approving the FY 2023 supplemental stabilization aid application. And that's to get our cut, part of our cutback. Motion to approve the revised renewal agreement with Sedexo for the 23-24 school year. Motion to approve agreement with PSENG. Motion to approve the Land Triangle School Playground Proposal. Also, the Sunnymead School Pavilion Proposal. Motion to approve a contract for the construction of the pavilion at Sunnymead. Motion to approve and dispose of old obsolete equipment. And a motion to accept donations. And I did want to point out in the donations that we are getting a Dogwood tree. And Mr. Goodhue, I want to thank you and also Central Jersey Nurseries for working on that for a former principal of Triangle School who passed away recently, and that tree will be in Mr. Rosenlicht's honor.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion in a second? Any discussion by the board on the action agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marine?
Yes, motion passes.
And finally, I'd like for the board's consideration of bylaws, policies, and regulations that were reviewed by the Governance Committee for second reading.
All right, can I get a motion in a second? Any discussion by the board? All right, seeing none, we'll move to roll.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Kidd?
Yes.
Ms. Lanning Beeter?
Yes.
Mr. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Ms. Stats?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
And Mr. Marine?
Yes, motion passes. All right, we'll move on to the second public, or I guess now the third public comment period. We very much welcome input from the public during board meetings. There'll be, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be over for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district. As per bylaw 0167, before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There's a three-minute limit on public comment. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there's a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Department of Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein. Do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session.
Good evening, Stefania Lockwood, Millstone River Road. The following are excerpts from the New Jersey School Ethics Commission Public Advisory Opinion A12-22, in which the commission was asked whether a board member would violate the School Ethics Act if he or she votes in the affirmative on a board motion to refuse to implement the NJSLS for health and physical education, or votes in the affirmative, and/or, excuse me, votes in the affirmative on a board motion to change the application of statutory language from 18A354.7 from opt-out to opt-in. The commission then goes on to cite relevant state law, including a provision 6A8-3.1A, NJAC, which requires their emphasis, "District Boards of Education to ensure that curriculum and instruction are designed and delivered in such a way that all students are able to demonstrate the knowledge and skills specified by the NJSLS and shall ensure that appropriate instructional adaptations are designed and delivered." After further review of relevant state laws, the opinion continues, "District Boards of Education have a clear and unequivocal obligation to, quote, 'ensure that curriculum and instruction are designed and delivered,'" end quote, "in a way that all students can demonstrate, quote, 'the knowledge and skills specified by the NJSLS,'" end quote. This obligation is non-wavable, and there are consequences for non-compliance. This inquiry, however, seeks to determine whether individual school officials," again, their emphasis, "not the district and/or board as a public body, would violate the act if they voted affirmatively to refuse to implement the NJSLS for health and phys ed, and/or voted affirmatively to change the application of state law whereby parents can opt in as opposed to opt out of instruction in health, family education, or sexual education. Board members are required to abide by the Code of Ethics for School Board Members, and this includes the following. I will uphold and enforce all laws, rules, and regulations of the state of New Jersey and court orders pertaining to schools. Desire changes shall only be brought about through legal and ethical procedures." NJSA 18A12241A. Hopefully, you're all familiar with that. Based on the foregoing, if a final decision from any court of law or administrative agency of this state were issued, and it showed that an individual school official had acted contrary to the laws, rules, and regulations promulgated by the State Board of Education, he or she could then be found in violation of the Code of Ethics for your conduct outlined in this request. Moreover, even if an individual school official could not be found in violation of the Code of Ethics, if the board ultimately refused to implement the NJSLS for health and phys ed, or changed the application of the statutory language from opt-out to opt-in, the board as a public body would be violating the aforementioned education laws and regulations, and ramifications could follow. District boards of education are required to ensure that the curriculum and instruction provided to students aligns with the NJSLS. Although constructive criticism and divergent viewpoints and beliefs can always lead to a more robust and thoughtful determination, the time to do so, at least with regard to the 2020 NJSLS, has passed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I have my own timer because I tend to talk a lot. Good evening. My name is Frank Moreno. I'm a resident of Somerset County, born and raised in Bow and Brook, where I currently live. I'm a spouse, I'm a parent, I'm a local attorney, and tonight I come before you as vice chair of the Somerset County Board of Commissioners LGBTQ+ Advisory Board. The board was established in the summer of 2020 by the county commissioners, particularly Commissioner Melanie Moreno. Our board is comprised of a diverse group of Somerset County residents, whose job it is to advise the county and local governments of Somerset County in our matters affecting the LGBTQ+ community, and to answer questions and address issues. I'd like to take this opportunity at this time to thank the Hillsborough Township Board of Education for your acceptance, your courage, and your support of LGBTQ+ youth. Thank you, and continue the good work. You have adopted policies that will support the youth in your community. Please continue to do so. It is important for this board and for this entire community to know just how important lifesaving work is for the youth of this town. In the 2022 survey of LGBTQ youth mental health performed by the Trevor Project, it was revealed that 45% of LGBTQ+ youth have seriously considered suicide. LGBTQ+ youth who found that their schools were affirming reported lower rate of attempting suicide. Makes sense, right? LGBTQ+ youth who lived in a community that is accepting of LGBTQ+ people reported significantly lower rates of attempting suicide. We live in a time when anti-LGBTQ+ rhetoric seems to be everywhere we turn, particularly rhetoric attacking our transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming youth. Your work and support is more important now than ever. Other districts can look to you and model themselves after what has been done in Hillsborough. We need you, the kids need you, and the community needs you. When you support the youth of this community, we are stronger as a county and as a state. And please, make no mistake about it, you are saving lives. You're saving the lives of the children of this community. I want to thank every member of this board and the township of Hillsborough for your continued support. I want to particularly thank the parent who stood up last week and spoke on behalf of the youth. I hope that parent knows how important their statement was to show support of the youth of the town, and they are the types of advocates that are ever so important to our community. As to the LGBTQ+ advisory board, we are at your disposal. We have meetings every second Thursday of the month. They're all Zoom. Please come and attend, and if you have any questions or you need anything of us, please contact us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
I live in Hillsborough. I did not, I feel like I have not heard a response to some of the parents that have written in recently. I know that it looks like five people have written in about Woodford class sizes, and I think in the past maybe it was Sunnymead parents were writing in. I was just wondering, I know that this is not a Q and A, but just, you know, if we could, it'd be nice to know if there are going to be more classes or more teachers for some of the areas that, some of the classes, classes that seem to be having higher enrollments, and it'd just be nice to know that, and just, I know this budget time is sort of past, but just to think about if you are able to get the extra $600,000, maybe you could sort of give another year where you can have an extra teacher in these schools. Also, Eris's class sizes are getting a little bit on the larger size too, at least some of the classes, just to think about that. I know in the past, I feel like one of the philosophies of the boards was to do as much as you can for the students now and sort of worry about it a little bit later. So that would be one way to do it, if class sizes are important, to possibly consider adding an extra class in Woodford, Sunnymead, any other schools that possibly need it now, and then hopefully the referendum will pass, and hopefully the 20 staff members is enough to help us, given all the extra students that are going to be coming in. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Christina Smith, HEA Second VP and Pride Chair. Tonight, I'd like to bring you up to date on some of the great Pride initiatives that took place in Hillsborough over the last couple of months. In December, Pride adopted a group home in Hillsborough consisting of six adults. Some of our members joined them for a pizza party. We did cookie decorating and played holiday bingo. It was a fun night for all of us. In January, Pride collected food and non-perishables to donate to the Hillsborough Food Bank. Members in all eight schools and the transportation department participated in restocking the food bank. A $1,000 donation accompanied the delivery. Pride was also able to support One Hillsborough in their celebration of Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy by providing refreshments, sandwiches, and desserts to all that attended. Last month, Pride sponsored our Feeding the Essential Workers initiative and provided lunch for over 200 essential workers throughout Hillsborough. Lunch was sent from Jersey Mike's and Just Ups. We also supported Borough Safe in their Night of Conversations. A Pride grant was written to provide food from Lenny's and some giveaways. Members from the Pride Committee also attended the event by setting up a booth and contributing to the conversation. Pride is also finishing up our Postcards for Seniors initiative. This year's theme was "Wherever Life Takes You, Go With All Your Heart." Postcards were made from the three winning designs and then sent to elementary schools. We have already sent out over 400 postcards to seniors in assisted living centers around town. All of these wonderful initiatives are made possible through grants funded by the NJEA. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other community members like to make public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, and we'll open up to any board members that would like to make comment. Ms. Stats?
A couple of things I wanted to talk about. On April 1st, I, as well as Mr. Volpe, attended the robotics event that Hillsborough High School's Team 75 participated in in Montgomery. And the students, the mentors, the advisor, Todd McDonald, were also very welcoming, enthusiastic, and informative about the many aspects of Team 75. Obviously, they are involved with the creation and working the robot in the competition, but there are so many other things they, they are involved in, communication, promoting the event, collaboration. Many of the mentors started when their children participated as high school students, but they continue to help long after their children have graduated. They're very invested in it and very enthusiastic. And as they said earlier, they received the first impact award. And a term that was used by several of the participants was gracious professionalism. While it is a competition, it's not cutthroat, and they often will help someone who's struggling with a part of their robot that may be broken by providing help or parts. And it's, I'll say it again, gracious professionalism can be applied to so many different parts of a lot of things that we all participate in. So I want to thank them for being so welcoming. And on another note, a more somber note, I want to honor the memory of two former colleagues, math teachers at Hillsborough High School, who passed away recently. Jim Pekel was a math teacher. He also was in charge of AVI for many years, a very kind man who quietly helped his colleagues without expectation of repayment. And Carol Jorgensen, who also died recently, who had an amazing sense of humor, very enthusiastic, who, you know, as soon as you saw her, most people, I think everyone would say, you would just smile just at seeing her. They were both very passionate about teaching math to high school students, and they will be missed.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Ms. Nurse?
If I'm remembering correctly, the, this is the second time we had students from the Future Business Leaders of America come to talk about stipends. That is correct. I'm just wondering if, I'm not sure if they need guidance on how to go about proposals for a stipend, if they're working with their staff member in charge, or if we can look into that to give them a little bit of guidance?
Yeah, just for that application of the board members, I have spoken to some of the students in the past, as well as the advisor, the students who spoke so eloquently tonight, I think were different students than came up last time, but I will try to make sure that the advisor or moderator gets that message out to all of the students and not just ones who have come up to the voting.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Just in the last couple of weeks, I know that the board has received letters from some community members expressing concerns about their children in the school, especially on the subjects such as the curriculum or access to facilities like bathrooms and showers and those types of things. And, you know, there are a lot of people in the community, families with children in the schools who are concerned about such things. And no one's against anyone so much as they are concerned for their child and their child's experience. And it is, they're not organized, so these letters come in or these comments come in like popcorn and piecemeal, and they're not here to show up en masse. But they're loving and caring people, and we really were all concerned for the well-being and safety of every child in the school. Many of these families feel as though their role as parents and as families as being the ultimate solution for their child's health and well-being. Many of these families are concerned that that role has been or is being usurped by rules and codes and laws that are being passed in Trenton, for the most part. They write letters to the superintendent or the Board of Ed, perhaps with some sense of, well, can't you do something about this? And it is, in fact, helpful to have the comments brought forward really repeatedly, reminding us that a lot of these structures and requirements are passed down from Trenton, for lack of a better word. And so the issue really is, has more to do with November and how people vote in general than even it has to do with this particular Board of Education. Many of the policies that get affirmed here are forwarded to us by people who review and analyze the statutes and try to make sense of what the boundary lines are, and they codify policies that express what the boundaries are that have been dictated by the state. And as board members, we review these policies, but it is a true statement that, to a very large extent, there's not a lot of wiggle room from a policy point of view. At least, that's the representation that I've been given. And so if there are folks watching or folks that have written letters, it's not that Mr. Volpe ignores the letters because he doesn't. He's really very conscientious about responding to every one of them, which I really appreciate. And there may be accommodations that can be made on a case-by-case basis. But the real concern is, if there is a real concern, the places where that can be addressed most effectively is where it comes to state government, representation, Assembly members, Senate. Those are all the folks who have voted for and have approved these types of policies. So we function as best we can within those boundaries. It doesn't mean we have to like them. Some of us do, some of us don't as individuals, but we do need to obey the law. But for the families who feel as though their concerns for their children are being usurped, the response and the best response is to find out what can be done and how you want to vote when the time comes. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments by the board?
I agree with Mr. Davis's statement, but what I'd also like to say is I think there should be care and tolerance for every child in the district.
Thank you. Ms. Stats?
Regarding the parents' roles in their education of their children, of all children, I do wonder about the, they're both being usurped, but there are so many nuances regarding making sure we're educating and providing safety for all of our students. And I myself have struggled with, you know, some of the, you know, trying to protect the child in case they have parents that might react in a unsafe manner. But I do think the, our district is motivated to collaborate with parents, to, I really think we are, we try to provide a collaboration between parents and administration and teachers to provide the safest and best learning environment for our students. Sometimes that can be a struggle, but I think for the most part, we're all in sync as to doing what's best for everyone. And sometimes that can be a hard thing to achieve when trying to provide safety for some students may be perceived as unsafe for others, and it's that balance that we're trying to perceive, to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vafala?
So I just wanted to quickly mention for the board's consideration that HHS Theater's International Field Trip deadline for registration is due May 1st, and so in order for them to attend, they would need the board's approval to do so, and I don't believe it was on the action agenda, but I just wanted to put that out there. I also had emailed about that earlier. And also additionally, I just wanted to offer some insight in, from a student's perspective in regards to the curriculum. All I can say is that, you know, from my lived experiences and from talking with a lot of my peers, I think a lot of students, you know, regardless of what the curriculum may entail, benefit from knowing that they're seen and heard. And I know to different people that may have different implications and mean different things, but in regards of, you know, sort of treading the line between